Okay, I see that several more have joined us. So why don't we go ahead and get started here? If we go the whole time, great. If we wrap up early because the conversation is lagging, that's okay, too. We'll make the best of it. Thank you, everybody, for joining me this evening. My name is Jason Stevens. I'm a visiting assistant professor at Ashland University and director of teacher programs at the Ashbrook Center. And I'd like to welcome you to another installment, another student webinar in our core document series. This evening, we're going to be looking at Brown versus Board of Education, the Supreme Court case from 1954, which overruled the former precedent established in Plessy v. Ferguson and the infamous separate but equal doctrine. I thank you all for joining us this evening. It's good to see you again. I believe I just saw you last month. The conversation was focused on Abraham Lincoln's second inaugural address. So maybe we'll try to connect the dots here between Lincoln's second inaugural, the end of the Civil War, and what we're seeing here in this document nearly 100 years later in Brown v. Board. And just to remind you that I look forward to seeing you again next month, when we'll be discussing Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech. At that time, Dr. Chris Burkett, who many of you probably know, he's led some of these webinars. He and I will be joining you for a conversation on that document. So maybe we can wrap things up tonight by trying to connect what we see here in the Brown v. Board case with Martin Luther King Jr.'s message will be in the "I Have a Dream" speech in 1963. So let me welcome you all to see you again. I hope you are all doing well with this transition, with the adjustment that we're all having to deal with in these present times. I just want to, first of all, commend all of you for joining me tonight to have this conversation about a very important topic. And I'll just tell you that teaching classes like this in my undergrad classes, my graduate classes, and for high schoolers like you, this is always the highlight of my day. It gives me a chance to sort of escape the news and just focus on the things that are always important and are always going to be important. The story of America. And that story gives us great hope for the future, which is something I think that we all can latch on to, that we all need a little bit of in these days ahead. I read these documents in the history of America. I'm always filled with this sense of hopefulness. I hope that we can take the next hour to sort of just maybe escape our present circumstances and just focus on the document and have a great conversation with each other and a conversation with the document itself and learn something about that great American story and take a little bit of hope with us back into the world. So I'd just like to begin by posing this question to you. Why do you think, why is this document, Brown versus Board of Education of Topeka, Kansas? Why is this document important? Why should we be studying this document? And you'll notice, maybe I'll just preface my question with this. This document is a little different, maybe, than what you're used to reading, right? This is a Supreme Court case. This isn't a letter or a formal speech or a public address or anything like that. This is a Supreme Court case. And a Supreme Court case is a bit of a different kind of animal when it comes to the study of original and primary documents. So, for example, I'm teaching a class right now for my college students. Class is constitutional powers. And most of the class, we're reading Supreme Court decisions. And one thing I would recommend to you as you're reading these Supreme Court decisions, don't think of these as sort of political treatments, sort of an abstract, otherworldly sort of documents. It may come across that way, especially in comparison to something like Lincoln's second inaugural address. What these really are, at the end of the day, they're a conversation. They still are a conversation between the different justices. So the majority and minority will be arguing back and forth with each other, having a conversation over the meaning and application of the Constitution not to be given the circumstances at hand in the present case. I know when I first read Supreme Court decisions, I was really intimidated by that. I was, okay, here's, right, this is a justice, it's like a lawyer, he's using all this legal jargon. I'm not sure if I'm smart enough to follow along. I'll tell you this, each and every one of you, you're definitely smart enough to follow along. But don't let the language be a barrier. It's just like any other document, like a conversation between free and equal human beings who are after the truth.
I'm keeping an eye on the chat here, and a couple of students have posted something. Annika put that this was a landmark case in regards to racial desegregation. And Sasha wrote that it's a huge milestone for civil rights, and it shows the evolution of the Supreme Court's view on race in a way.
Ah, yeah, those are both really insightful. Both of those are really insightful comments on the importance of this case. You're right. Annika, it was a landmark Supreme Court case. And by the way, I love that you're using the chat, you should continue to do that. But because this is a discussion, a conversation of sorts, you should be free to just unmute your microphone and jump into that conversation with Mrs. Richmond and I. Don't let us do all the talking, okay? But you're both right. It was a landmark Supreme Court case in regards to racial desegregation, and it was a milestone for civil rights. In many ways, it really helps to get the ball rolling in terms of the larger civil rights movement that will develop in the 1950s and the 1960s. So, for example, the following year after Brown v. Board II in 1955, I believe, the Montgomery Bus Boycott begins, and Martin Luther King Jr. comes to prominence as a civil rights leader. It will be followed in the 1960s with significant civil rights legislation. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965 will be made possible in many ways by the ruling of the court in this case in 1954. Let's try to, let's talk about some of the context for this case, though. And to do that, we might have to even go back further than 1954. We might have to go all the way back to 1896. Why would that date maybe be important for understanding the document before us? What's the importance of the date 1896 when it comes to understanding Brown v. Board?
Wasn't that when the Supreme Court's decision for Plessy v. Ferguson was adopted, like the separate but equal?
Exactly, Michaela, yes, exactly. Plessy v. Ferguson, 1896. Have you guys ever read or studied the Plessy case? This was another, this was another decision by, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Just saying, yes, a lot of kids are saying, yes.
Okay, so what do you know about Plessy? What did that case have to do with? Again, I haven't really gotten to the Brown v. Board yet. But to understand Brown v. Board, we need to understand Plessy because, as I'm sure you know, the Brown case effectively overturned the Plessy case.
So basically, so Plessy versus Ferguson was basically talking about how people should be separate but equal. But then in Brown versus Board of Education, it was saying the opposite, or not saying the opposite, but saying that separating people wasn't equal.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. In Plessy, that case had to do, the plaintiff was a man named Homer Plessy. That case had to do with railway car or railroad cars. The state had provided separate accommodations, one for white passengers and one for blacks. And that law was challenged, and it went all the way to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court said, that does not violate the Constitution. That does not violate the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, so long as the separate accommodations for the races are basically equal to each other. This leads to the very controversial doctrine that many of you have already cited, separate but equal. Now, 60 years later, separate but equal, that had been entrenched as a constitutional principle, especially throughout the Deep South in terms of various public accommodations, public transportation, public education. It wasn't as entrenched in northern states and some of the border states like Kansas, situated pretty much dead center in the country. Kansas, in their public education system, for example, it wasn't required that they have separate accommodations for white and black students. But school districts were allowed to have separate accommodations if they wanted. And that is what is at stake in the Brown case 60 years after Plessy. Because in the school district of Topeka, Kansas, several families, I think there were about a dozen different plaintiffs who had come together in a class action lawsuit. A class action lawsuit means that many individuals join a court case, even though perhaps only one name will appear right at the head. In this case, it was Oliver Brown, whose daughter Linda Brown was an elementary school student in the Topeka School District. And she had enrolled, her family had enrolled her in Topeka's public school system. And she had to walk, I believe it was six blocks to catch a bus to take her to an all-black school a couple of miles away, when an all-white school was just seven blocks from her house. So she had applied to go to this all-white school, had been denied admission. And the state had actually required her to travel farther in order to attend this all-black segregated school. Her father sued the school district and was joined by other parents, like I said, about a dozen of them from that school district.
And somewhere from other states, there wasn't just Kansas. There were some from Delaware and
South Carolina and Virginia. Yes, exactly right. It wasn't just Topeka when this case finally reaches the Supreme Court. What the Supreme Court did, as they often do, there were other pending cases in the lower district courts that were based on the same constitutional principle, the same legal challenge. And the court ends up combining them all into one case. Yeah, as Mrs. Richmond said, from Delaware, Virginia, South Carolina, and Kansas, the court combines them all, which I believe Justice Earl Warren, Chief Justice Earl Warren remarks at the beginning of his case. And so the American public knows whatever comes out of this case, it's going to be significant. This is a real challenge to the separate but equal doctrine. One of the advantages of the Brown case, by the way, is that you're not dealing with railway cars. You're not dealing with separate accommodations on the railroad. You're dealing with public education, wherein the separate facilities for the races, it seems much more significant. And the court will explain its significance here in its decision. So that's some of the background to the case. By the way, the legal counsel, the main legal counsel for the plaintiff in this case was a man by the name of Thurgood Marshall, who a number of years later will be appointed by LBJ to the Supreme Court as the first African-American Supreme Court justice. The NAACP, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, also, right, had a significant hand in this case in providing legal counsel for the plaintiff. And the court now is asked to overturn about 60 years of Supreme Court precedent. This is a big deal. The court does not often come right out and overturn a precedent, especially a longstanding one, like had been established through the Plessy doctrine over the past 60-plus years. So my question to you is, now that you've read through this opinion, what does the Supreme Court say? It's a unanimous opinion. It's a unanimous opinion announced by Chief Justice Earl Warren, who just the previous year had been appointed the Chief Justice by Dwight Eisenhower. He formerly served as the governor of California. He replaced Chief Justice Vincent, who in the lead-up to this case seemed poised to back up the Plessy case, reaffirm the precedent of separate but equal. But Earl Warren's appointment to the bench changes things. In his opinion, right, this is a unanimous opinion, so it's a 9-0 case. What does he say? What is his main argument? If you had to sum up this case in a sentence or two, why does Earl Warren reject precedent of separate but equal that had been court precedent for the past 60 years?
With the case, what I noticed was that Warren ruled that the Fourteenth is inconclusive as to its intended effect on public. I really liked how, well, evidence, he was mostly focusing on the effects of segregation on society. Well, had pretty much the same equipment, but liked that he focused on more of a moral issue with it.
Yeah, that's a great point, Michaela. You were cutting out a little bit there, but I think I heard the main point. That Earl Warren goes to the Constitution, and he looks specifically at what part of the Constitution, Michaela?
Wasn't it the Fourteenth Amendment?
The Fourteenth Amendment, yeah. And if you have your pocket constitutions with you, which, by the way, I always hold close to my heart. I never go anywhere without my pocket constitution. The Fourteenth Amendment says, I'm looking at section one of the Fourteenth Amendment. If you have it, great. If not, I'll just read it out loud to you. "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States or shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." Part of the Fourteenth Amendment that is at stake in this case is that last clause, that no state shall deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. That's the part of the Constitution that is most at stake in this case. The Fourteenth Amendment, what do you guys know about the Fourteenth Amendment? Was it ratified? What were the circumstances behind the ratification of the Fourteenth Amendment? Before or after the Civil War?
I think I can jump in a little bit here.
Please, Carolina. Yeah, I can hear you just fine.
Well, it was definitely after the Civil War, the Thirteenth Amendment. I think Abraham Lincoln had been assassinated at this point.
Yes.
Okay, so when the states, I'm sorry, when the Confederate states made a part of the Union again, they were forced to subscribe to the Thirteenth, the Fourteenth, and the Fifteenth Amendment.
Yes, that's exactly right. Yeah, the Thirteenth, the Fourteenth, and the Fifteenth Amendment, those are known collectively as Civil War Amendments. Those amendments that were passed and ratified right in the years immediately following the Civil War. So the Thirteenth Amendment abolishes slavery. Lincoln actually signed the Thirteenth Amendment, but he is assassinated just months before the Thirteenth Amendment is ratified. The Thirteenth Amendment abolishing slavery is ratified in December of 1865. Lincoln's shot in April of that same year. But the Thirteenth Amendment is followed up by the Fourteenth and the Fifteenth Amendments. The Fourteenth Amendment, which we just read, dealing with the privileges and immunities of citizenship, the due process of law, and the equal protection of the laws. And then finally, the Fifteenth Amendment, which provided voting rights for African-Americans. These were the Civil War Amendments. Keep in mind, right, they're around when Plessy decided in 1896. And Plessy had decided, the Supreme Court in that case said, that separate but equal accommodations, facilities for African-Americans and whites, they did not violate the Fourteenth Amendment. Now, the Constitution hasn't changed in terms of, right, the language of this amendment from 1896 or really from 1868, when it's ratified to 1896 in Plessy. Now, in the present day, in 1954, when Brown has decided, the language of the amendment hasn't changed. Right, but the question is, do separate educational facilities for the races, do those violate the equal protection of the laws required under the Fourteenth Amendment? And now we go back to Brown case. And Justice Earl Warren, what does he say about trying to understand the meaning of the Fourteenth Amendment? Let me try to be more specific. Does he say that that the Constitution has changed or evolved since that time? Does he say, we're going to try to put ourselves back in the place of the framers who wrote the amendment in 1868? I'm thinking of the passage.
Here, it says, "In approaching this problem, we cannot turn the clock back to 1868 when the amendment was adopted, or even to 1896 when Plessy versus Ferguson was written. We must consider public education in the light of its full development in the present and its present place in American life throughout the nation. Only in this way can it be determined if segregation in public schools deprives these plaintiffs of the equal protection of the laws." And I think there he's saying, back in those early days, there wasn't too much public education for anybody in the South especially.
Absolutely.
Pretty new.
Yeah, when the Fourteenth Amendment is ratified in 1868, I mean, public education, especially for blacks, many of whom were former slaves in the Deep South, there was no public education to speak of. In fact, there was, even in the South, there was little education even for whites.
It would be private tutors for the rich kids, but not much for anybody else.
Exactly. So Warren says, look, we can't turn the clock back. We're not going to try to put ourselves back in the place of the framers who ratified this amendment. We can't even put ourselves back in the place of those justices in 1896 who delivered the infamous Plessy v. Ferguson case. But what can we do? He says, "We must consider public education." I'm just reading what Mrs. Richmond read for us from the same passage. "We must consider public education in the light of its full development and its present place in American life throughout the nation. Only in this way can it be determined if segregation in public schools deprives these plaintiffs of the equal protection of the laws." In other words, if segregation in public schools violates the Fourteenth Amendment. So in regards to that question, what does the court say in the following paragraphs? Right, he says, "We're going to have to consider public education in the light of its full development and its present place in America." So what consideration is given to public education? In the following paragraphs, what does the court say? Public education, eh, you know what, it's really not that important. You know, not everybody needs it, not everybody gets it. You know, you don't need it to be a good sentence or anything like that. Is that what the court says?
No, not at all. The exact opposite. So I document, but I have read through the conclusion, and so I think I can pretty much elaborate on how they just said that it definitely wasn't equal. So I don't know if I could go ahead and say that or if you want.
Yeah, please go ahead, Carolina.
Okay. Eventually, I think the thing that they used to establish one for all, that it was unequal, is that they brought in, like, a logical analysis of African-American kids who were put in through the segregated system. And it was shown that they had much lower self-esteem levels, and they definitely felt inferior. And so they rationalized that a separate but equal education system pretty much inhibits the growth of African-American children, because children overall are the future. Can't stand it, huh?
That's exactly right. The court relied heavily on these modern psychological studies that had been done on the effects of racially segregated public education facilities on African-American children. Studies that were not available, right, in 1896 or 1868. And I don't know if in your version of the document, you have the famous footnote number 11, where the court had cited various studies by Dr. K.B. Clark, Clark, who had conducted many of these studies, looking at young African-American children and young white children, conducting various psychological experiments on them, one of which dealt with having a white doll and a black doll and letting the students choose. And even the black, everybody, including the African-American students, chose the white doll because they believed the white doll was somehow happier or better or superior than the black doll. And these were results of a psychological study that the court heavily relied upon. And coming to what conclusion? Carolina sort of already spelled it out for us. The conclusion that racially segregated public education had a disastrous effect on the psychological well-being of students, particularly African-American students, leading to feelings of inferiority.
I think it's very interesting that they focused on the psychological aspect. When I was doing some research on the case, one of the things that they felt was very good about using the example of the Topeka schools was because as materials went, the African-American schools had a decent amount of materials, and they were comparable to the materials that the white schools had. So they definitely didn't want to focus on the material aspect, because then, I think, would say, as long as they have, we could be able to keep the system. They focused on the aspect, because you can never change that, like, it has to go.
Yeah, that's a great point, because keep in mind, remember the doctrine from Plessy v. Ferguson, separate but equal. Right, in this case, the defendants had argued, look, we're abiding by that court precedent. Yes, there are separate educational facilities for white and black students, but they're equal, right, in terms of resources. In fact, by the way, in the years leading up to this case, the African-American school districts had been provided with additional funds from the state in order to make their facilities better than they had been leading up to that point, because a lot of times, they weren't really equal. But in this case, the defendants were arguing, hey, you know what? They've got the same teacher requirements, the same teacher licensure requirements. They've got the same facilities, adequate buildings, the same textbooks, the same curriculum. Everything is equal. They're just separated. And that's Plessy v. Ferguson, which is why the lower courts, the lower district courts, when they ruled on this case before it got to the Supreme Court, said, you know, we may not like this, but yeah, it's separate but equal, and that's court precedent, that's Plessy v. Ferguson. So they ruled against Brown on the basis of the Plessy doctrine. Here, what does the court say about that doctrine? Does the court say, yes, the Plessy doctrine, we're going to uphold it, but in this case, this case is not living up to that doctrine? That's not what the court is saying, right? The court is saying, the doctrine itself is wrong. The doctrine itself is wrong. Because, look at the, let's see, one of the, the second paragraph after where Mrs. Richmond was reading. The court puts it in, you know, in straightforward terms. What is the question that we have to face here? We come then to the question presented. This is the question the court has to answer. "The segregation of children in public schools, solely on the basis of race, even though the physical facilities and other tangible factors may be equal, deprives the children of the minority group of equal educational opportunities." That's the question. All things being equal, even if they're separate, on the basis of race, does that separation in public schools on the basis of race, does that violate the equal protection of the laws of the Fourteenth Amendment? Does that deprive children of the minority group of equal educational opportunities? And then the court says, we believe that it does. And then it goes into, right, a discussion of sort of the psychological studies that Carolina had brought up, about how the separate but equal doctrine in terms of education. Carolina had brought up about how, um, the separate but equal doctrine in terms of education generated feelings of inferiority on the part of the minority races. And a policy of separating the races is usually interpreted as denoting the inferiority, the court says, I'm quoting here, of the Negro group. A sense of inferiority affects the motivations of children to learn. In other words, separate but equal in education promotes feelings of inferiority and it hampers the educational effort. It harms the ability, the motivation of children to learn. And then the court says, at the end of that same paragraph, "Whatever may have been the extent of psychological knowledge at the time of Plessy v. Ferguson, this finding is amply supported by modern authority. Any language in Plessy v. Ferguson contrary to this finding is rejected." And then here's the key line, these next two sentences. If you only take one thing away from this case, it should be these two sentences. "We conclude that in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal." So there is no separate but equal. The court is throwing out the separate but equal doctrine. Why? Because again, this is, this is a big deal for the court to overrule a past precedent. That doesn't often happen. There's, you know, basically one of two ways to overrule a Supreme Court decision. Because we know the Supreme Court, right, is the highest law in the land. There's no appeal beyond the Supreme Court. There's only two ways to overturn a Supreme Court decision. One is through a constitutional amendment. Right, so you remember the eighteen fifty-seven Supreme Court case, Red Scott v. Sanford? Right, that case was overturned through the Thirteenth Amendment. Plessy in eighteen ninety-six is overturned by another Supreme Court case. And that's the only other way outside of a constitutional amendment to overturn an opinion of the Supreme Court is if the Supreme Court actually overturns itself. And that's exactly what they're saying. That's what we're doing here. Separate but equal, they throw it out. Why? Because separation is inherently unequal. If the races are separated, there can be no equality.
Who ruled in this case, like, undoubtedly was aware of the turmoil that was happening racially in the United States at the time. So they're probably pretty sure in this case, there would be a lot, there would be many more efforts to change legis, things for African Americans, Americans. So I'm pretty sure they were aware of all that instability, but they went with it anyways. I don't know. I commend them. It's pretty brave, I guess.
This, this, this case was, was celebrated in many parts of the United States, but it was also derided in the deep South in many places. Um, because what we're being, what we're told here by the Supreme Court is separation is inherently unequal, right? And just like Carolina, I, right, we read this, are we all right? And this, this is sort of restoring the spirit of the Declaration of Independence, right, that all men are created equal, endowed by their creative and certain and alienable rights. This is a point in American history that seemed to, to move us closer, right, to fulfilling those original purposes of the nation as expressed in Thomas Jefferson's Immortal Declaration of Independence. While at the same time, there are those, though, who don't celebrate, right, who actually cry foul, who offer resistance to the ruling, um, especially in, in the deep South. And what you notice is at the end of this case, uh, the nineteen fifty-four case, the Supreme Court, what, what don't they say? What don't they do that you might expect them to do? Maybe this is too hard of a question.
I could jump in.
Yeah, please, Sasha.
Um, last year in AP Gov., we did talk about this and there was kind of, um, a precedent set in the first Brown v. Board of Education and they kind of said, "In a year, we will come back and check in on how desegregation is going." So I think that might be kind of part of it where they didn't expressly say, "Okay, you need to segregate and this is how you need to do it." They said, "You need to desegregate and we will check in on how you are doing that in a year," or however long it was.
Yeah, exactly. And they said, "You know, we're going to hear more arguments about how that can be done." They didn't provide any real direction for the states on desegregating public schools. That's why Brown v. Board of Education Two argued in May of nineteen fifty-five is necessary. It's sort of, it, it, it completes Brown One from nineteen fifty-four because in the next year, the court comes out and says, "We fully endorse our previous view as expressed in nineteen fifty-four." But they say, "Now we need to actually implement this." And the phrase from Brown Two is, "It needs to be implemented with all deliberate speed." They say that the defendants must make a prompt and reasonable start towards full compliance, compliance at the earliest practicable date.
Which is still very, very vague.
Still ambiguous, right? Which is still vague. It's like, you, you need to do this at the earliest practicable date, right? Okay, now look.
Thirty years.
Exactly. I mean, look, I'm talking to the right audience here. Um, you know, students, if your teacher said, "Your paper on Abraham Lincoln is due next Monday, you know what you have to do and by when?" But if your teacher tells you, "Your paper is due at the earliest practicable date", how do you take that to me? Does that mean, "Ooh, I gotta do this right away"? Or you like, "I smell a loophole"? Right, if, if your assignment for your, your paper is due at the earliest practicable date, when are you going to turn in that paper? Sooner or later?
Ever, never.
And that's how the Southern states reacted to this. They were already dragging their heels, right? And with this pronouncement, which the court intended to be sort of a, a, um, an impetus to get the ball rolling, to get things started, but actually had the opposite effect, allowing them to dig their heels, the Southern, the deep South, to dig their heels in even more, uh, which is why you'll see in, when we get to Martin Luther King Jr.'s, I have a dream speech next week, I don't, next week, next month, uh, King will be talking about that, right? It's been ten years since Brown and still desegregation continues. I'm sorry, and still segregation continues. The desegregation movement, right, has not taken off because local and state authorities in the deep South have found ways to stall. Stall in regards to its implementation.
And some of them even simply said, "Okay, there's no more compulsory school law in our state. You don't have to go to school."
And, uh, yeah, they, they started, you know, shutting down all schools in some places just to avoid having to implement this decision. I think Carolina, did you want to jump in here?
Was, was the Civil Rights Act of sixty-four like a, a culmination of it then? Because, I mean, it's a law, that one has to be enforced. So it pretty much made everybody in the South have to segregate. But yeah, like, like King said, it was ten years after the court case.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. This case is instrumental in getting that, getting that ball rolling, which in many ways will culminate with the, the congressional legislation of the mid-sixties. The Voting, uh, the Voting Rights Act of sixty-five and the Civil Rights Act the year before in, in nineteen sixty-four, as, as Carolina mentions, um, really been putting some teeth to this Supreme Court decision. But you'll also notice, right, that, that the decision only has to do with public education, right? The court does not come out and say, "Separate but equal in every other, you know, way of life is also overturned." It wasn't. It would take another series of legal maneuvers of, of new laws, like Carolina mentioned, right, in order to stamp out separate but equal in other regard, right? In terms of restaurants and hotels, um, other public accommodations, public transportation, and other things. Because this case only had to do with public education.
It's, it's almost like Plessy versus Ferguson, which only had to do with train cars spread to cover everything. But this was like, "Oh, no, 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 this is only schools and we have plenty of time."
Right, right.
So it's like you could interpret things with a spin that seems most beneficial to your side.
Right.
Yeah, it's very interesting.
Why do you think they would focus? Why do you think the plaintiffs, right, in groups like the NAACP would focus on public education? As the, the focus of this case as opposed to, right, uh, railway cars?
Um, well, a lot of the civil rights leaders actually said that, um, education was fundamental to, um, lack excellence, I guess, or whatever the term they used was. They thought education, if the younger generation could be educated, they could grow up to not only continue the civil rights movement, but be greater and integrate more into the white society to get better jobs and better income and help economic positions as well.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Um, let's just maybe, if I could build on, on those, on those remarks a bit. So, um, why wouldn't they want to challenge Plessy v. Ferguson by bringing another case about railway cars, segregation on railway cars? Why would they focus on public education? Which seems much more significant, especially in terms of its deleterious effects on, on, right, on the, the, the emotional, the psyche of young children. It, it's not an accident that this, that, that, that this case focused on separate but equal educational facilities, right? And that's what ended up overturning Plessy v. Ferguson instead of focusing on, right, uh, separate but equal facilities in restaurants or bars or hotels or, or what have you. Why focus on public education? Yeah, please.
Yeah, um, I'm just trying to think of it from their perspective. Is it because, uh, it's almost an investment into the future?
Yeah, say more about that.
Is it to change what will be rather than what, what was or what is kind of?
Yeah, as the court says, "Public education is the very foundation of good citizenship." Public education is much more important, much more significant to developing good human beings and good citizens than, right, equal accommodations in a hotel or a railway car. This is, I mean, public education, if, if students are separated on the basis of race in public education, that is going to have monumental effects, not just on the individuals involved, but on society at large. This is a, a big deal, right? Not to say, not again to say that, right, segregation in, in, in other forms was not a big deal. This was one that everybody could recognize, almost everybody could see, right? This is, this is not something that we, as a nation, that we should be endorsing. This is something that we need to do something about.
I wonder if, Annika, can you get on your mic and say a little more about your point you just put in the, um, chat? I know you have a working mic. Annika, can you, can you say something? Oh, her mic isn't working. She said, "Perhaps children being treated unequally produces more empathy." Which I thought is an interesting point.
That's a great point.
That, that maybe this would, you know, almost like, you know, well kittens are cute and puppies are cute, little children are cute and, and this would get more empathy, empathy points, you know, it's interesting.
That's a great point, Annika. Yeah, because children being treated unequal, right, produces more, more, more empathy. And it's something that has long-lasting negative effects.
If I could, uh, come in here.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Um, so one, just to follow up on that point, I think also at the time, there were these deep stereotypes about African, specifically African American men, that they're dangerous and like they can't be around white women and things like that. And I think that makes it, uh, from a psychological standpoint, difficult to argue cases like integrated, integrated railway cars and, uh, kind of things that deal with working adults just, uh, kind of national psyche, uh, unfortunately. And so this has more emotional appeal as, as people are saying. And then I also think the general decision on the part of, uh, the NAACP and all the organizations involved with this to focus on education was maybe to fit with the sentiment of the time because we're in the fifties. This is a big moment for like the American dream, white picket fence, if you work hard, you can get ahead. But that fundamentally starts with, you know, if we educate our kids and you work hard in school, uh, you can get ahead. And so it's so symbolic, uh, that, you know, if we, if we can desegregate these schools and we have equality among our children, then i- in, in schools, then we have, uh, even if it's not true in terms of every law and buses and voting and things like that, we have a more symbolic sense of an equality that's coming.
That's a good point, right? Let's start here with public education. And from there, once we tackle that beast, then other relics of the Jim Crow era can eventually crumble with this initial victory. You start off with public education and the rest will, will follow. That's the hope, right? You can go from public education, right, to busing, for example, which is exactly what happened in nineteen fifty-five with the Rosa Parks and the Montgomery Bus Boycott, right? If you start with the Little Rock Nine, right, and children, and then, right, you take that victory on the road, sort of.
Well, I think another interesting thing is that the NAACP had started with education earlier, had started with higher education, with graduate school, with, with blacks getting into law schools.
Yeah.
And they had won, they had had some cases there, but they didn't set these sort of, you know, overturning Plessy, but they'd been having some successes. So they were kind of building on and building down, you know, sort of from the top down.
That's a great point and that's exactly right. I mean, and the, the case that Mrs. Richmond is referring to is a nineteen fifty case, I believe, that had to do with segregation in law school, which was overturned in the case that the court actually cites in this decision, Sweat v. Painter. I think that's how you say it, S. W. E. A. T. T. That was a nineteen fifty case dealing with graduate education. Um, okay, we've got about ten minutes left here. I want to maybe return to Plessy v. Ferguson for a moment because some of you are familiar with that case. That was not a unanimous decision. There was one lone dissenter in the Plessy case, Justice Harlan. Has anybody read Harlan's dissent?
I hope every one of my students says yes. That was what they read.
Yes, okay, good. What was Harlan's dissent? What was the crux of Harlan's argument in his dissent in the Plessy case? If you had to sum up Harlan's argument in, in a, a sentence or two, what would it be? I know maybe you, this isn't fresh in your mind.
I guess it was, uh, that, that color should have no place and the, the, the Constitution was colorblind.
That's it. That's the key line. Yeah, the Constitution is colorblind. Now, let me ask you this question, right? It's a very well-known dissent, Harlan's dissent in the Plessy case, the Constitution is colorblind. That's why segregation on the basis of race is unconstitutional because the Constitution does not see black and white. The Constitution is colorblind. Does the court in Brown endorse Harlan's view? Just think about this for a moment. Does the court in the Brown case endorse Harlan's view? Uh, Annika says it doesn't seem to go that far. Annika, I know your mic isn't working, right? I wish it could because I'd love to be able to talk this out with you. You're right. The court sort of votes up to that point, but draws back. It, it, it's hesitant to give a full-throated defense of what Harlan had said in eighteen ninety-six in his famous dissent, right? I, I, you go through this whole document, you'll never see the court saying, "Justice Harlan is vindicated, right? The, the Constitution is a colorblind document." It does, the court in Brown doesn't go that far. It does, the court in Brown doesn't go that far. Um, the court in Brown does not give a, a, does not focus on giving a constitutional argument against racial segregation. It's not so much a constitutional argument that we get in this document, but what kind of an argument do we get? You've already said it. So this is just recap. We don't get a constitutional argument so much as we get a psychological one. Right? The court relies on these various psychological studies that weren't available in 1896 and 1868. But what was available in 1896 was Harlan's famous dissent, right? The Constitution is colorblind. The court does not come out and endorse that view with a constitution. That's one very interesting, and we may even say a drawback to this case, that the court doesn't come out and read the Constitution as Harlan had read it. But they're still reading the Constitution through this prism of black and white, but, you know, merely saying, well, psychol- we need to look at the psychological studies. And because black children feel inferior, that's why we need to overturn this decision. Because they picked the white dolls instead of the black dolls, that's why we need to overturn. Justice Harlan would say, yeah, okay, that's important. I understand the importance, but what if studies had shown different effects? What if they, what, what if these children did not have sense, a sense of inferior? If they didn't all choose the white dolls, what then? Then would be the basis for the court to overturn Plessy. The basis Harlan would say is the Constitution should be colorblind. Right? If those psychological studies had ended up with different results, there's not a constitutional leg then for the court to stand off, at least as, right, as I'm reading this document because they don't make Harlan's argument. Um, that's strange. I wish they would have. I wish they would have went that far to make that argument.
So in regards to the court making that argument, could it be that they wanted, not necessarily that there weren't members of the court that agreed with Harlan, but that in order to get a unanimous majority decision, they had to take a less extreme view?
That is a great point, Eric. Right? Because there was a lot going on behind the scenes led by the efforts of Earl Warren to get a unanimous opinion in this case. We can't get it, we don't have the time to get into, and I, I'm not even, I don't pretend to be an expert on all those sort of behind the scenes maneuvering that went on in order to get a unanimous case. Maybe this was the only argument that all nine justices could get by. The effect of the ruling would have been the same whether or not it was just a bare majority or unanimous. But why do you think Earl Warren so badly wanted to have a unanimous decision? As opposed to a five-four decision or a six-three decision or an eight-one decision?
Because then there's the impression of unity. And if there's not any dissent in the court, then that gives the decision that much more authority.
That's exactly right. Absolutely. Right? And it would take away a possible argument by those defenders of racial segregation in the deep South. Like, ah, the Supreme Court didn't all, all agree on this part either, right? There was, uh, one or two or three justices who agree with us. It would give, right, the segregationists, right, some, some support for their argument. But by having a nine-o decision, they are completely deprived of that argument. Good. Good. Um, other questions? I see we're, we're, we only got a few minutes left here. So let me, let me turn it over to you guys. Do you guys have any questions or comments or anything that you want to bring out here from, from, uh, from your study of the text?
Uh, I was just wondering, was this, um, Chief Warren's first, uh, huge case after he was appointed?
Yes. It was because like I said, he was appointed by Eisenhower in, I think, 53, just before this case, right, right before they had oral arguments for this case. He replaced Justice Vincent, who had died that same year. And so this was sort of his, this was his first real big test.
Okay, thank you.
I think an interesting thing about, um, the Supreme Court justice, um, Justice Warren is that he was governor of California during the Japanese internment. And he fully supported that. And, um, I think Eisenhower made some very negative, um, remarks, I'm sure privately, but they got out about Warren, that, you know, Warren was such a mistake, um, to have appointed as Supreme Court justice because he did not expect him to rule in this sort of way. Who knows? Maybe Warren was trying to make up for what he viewed now as past mistakes.
Right, possibly. And there was a, there was a growing movement in the South for, right, an impeach Earl Warren movement. Right? Because like the president and other executive officials, members of the Supreme Court can be impeached and removed from office. Right? There were calls for Earl Warren's impeachment following this case.
I, I think another interesting thing to look at with this case, usually these cases we look at are ones that take place in the South. And those of us who aren't from the South or who view ourselves as enlightened, we the terrible South once again. And I think it's important to remember that later than this, I mean, up into the late 60s, 70s, there would be continuing racial strife in the North when it got into saying, okay, well, the North doesn't have laws about segregation, but it just so happens that black kids, um, the, the way that people happen to live, even though they're not forced to live in these neighborhoods by laws, there's a lot of custom. And so in order to equalize things, we're going to bus kids. You know, we're going to bus black kids into white schools. We're going to bus white kids into black schools, you know, this sort of thing. And there were racial riots in the North, in Boston, in Pittsburgh, and many places in the North, Detroit, over this. And, you know, these issues would still continue. You know, they weren't over, they weren't over in the 50s, they weren't over in the 60s. And they would, they would continue and they would be difficult cases and be like, you know, how far are you going to take this? And voluntary busing, you know, forced busing.
No, that's a great point. That's a great point. Um, I, I noticed here, I'm, I'm trying to keep it, right, half an eye on the chat. Eric asks, not particularly related, but how close have we ever gotten to impeaching a Supreme Court justice? I don't recall ever hearing of that being a serious threat to a justice. As far as Supreme Court justices go, there's only ever been one who was impeached, but not removed from office. He was acquitted. This was in the, uh, 19th century. Samuel Chase, not Salmon Chase. Samuel Chase, um, was, was the only Supreme Court justice impeached, but he was not removed from office. But other district courts, other federal judges were, have been impeached and removed from office.